I'd like to call our Wednesday meeting to order. It appears that all of our board members with the exception, has anyone seen John this morning?
Is he looking for parking space?
Yeah, with the exception of John Bacon.
I'm in the last space out there.
Oh, okay. Is he walking in? Oh, good. Okay, all board members are present. Our first item of action would be to approve the agenda for today. Do I hear a motion to approve? Moved by Carolyn Campbell, seconded by Deana Horst. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, 10-0. Our first real item of business is to act on the recommendations of the Professional Practices Commission. I see Kalen Kendall is with us and Scott is here. So Kalen, do you have any comments about that?
Starting on page 225 of your packet, on that page you have the recommendation for five individuals that the Professional Practices Commission recently made recommendations related to, and in the pages that follow, there are the initial orders for each of those and extensive information on the fifth case.
And I believe we've all had time to review those. Are there any questions before we ask for a motion? Carolyn Campbell?
Thank you. And I'm sorry because I just, it seems like I've, I know I've asked this before, but I'm asking it again today. It always concerns me, help me to understand that recommends the, when we allow someone to voluntarily surrender their teaching license, except, you know, I prefer for us to take it rather than, when they've done, in my mind.
You're just, excuse me.
In my mind, that's how I see it, that there is the total outcome the very same. Okay? I just don't like the idea of accepting the voluntary surrender.
It comes to the commission as a voluntary surrender.
Okay, oh, okay.
And therefore, it's just a matter of the commission accepting that voluntary surrender.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Then I would, oh, okay. Deana Horst?
Thank you. Does, whether it's surrendered, or whether voluntarily, or whether we, or whether it's revoked, without the, that person expressly, expressly saying, hey, I know I did wrong, and so here's, I agree with you that I should have it revoked, or in, in other words, it hasn't been challenged, the revoking hasn't been challenged. Is there any difference in the manner in which if that person appeals later, that we look at?
If I may clarify your question, appeal to who?
Appeal, well, if they appeal for reinstatement of their license, of their license later, as we've seen some folks do, does it make any difference in the way that the Practices Commission would, would look at that issue?
No. And if I may clarify, the difference between a voluntary surrender and a revocation, there's no difference. You are taking their license. The difference is, instead of going to trial, they're pleading guilty. You're still taking their license away, it still has an end result, it's still reported the same way. Five years from now, if someone wants to try to get their license back, you would have this information in front of you, the PPC would have it in front of them, and you can see why the person voluntarily surrendered their license, and consider it five years from now, just like you would today.
So essentially, it's not any, any difference?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Then the, oh, Ken Wellard, I'm sorry, I didn't see you here.
Scott, were any of these cases discovered through the rat back, or had these people been fingerprinted prior?
Three out of four were discovered due to rat back. I was informed as soon as they were arrested, or within a week of their arrest. That's why I was able to get in contact with the prosecuting attorney, let them know, hey, we have a vested interest in this, if you'd just kind of keep me updated on what's going on. That, I believe, is how I became involved with the, I wasn't directly involved in the Robert Gould case, but the prosecutor and the victims, I did speak with both parties. They were perfectly fine with, okay, we just don't want this person to ever teach again because of this. And I don't think, I even threw the suggestion out there, the prosecuting attorney asked me, what would it take for the board to revoke this person's license for them to never teach again? I threw out the suggestion of, well, they could do a voluntary surrender, they can do that whether they're convicted or not. And the prosecutor was able to work that into plea negotiations with that person's attorney, and I think that's, all of these were represented by the same attorney, and I think it's been kind of a, one way of operating, to kind of get charges pled down. But yes, I found out about these, and actually, I was going to make that a point when we talk about the fingerprinting, that's how I knew about them.
So you say one of them was not part of the rat back?
And I can't remember if I found out about it through rat back, or found out about it through the media first.
Okay.
I don't remember off the top of my head, sorry.
All right, thank you.
Mark Ferguson has a comment.
I just wanted to point out that with regard to the, the one of Todd Joseph Pootz, P-U-E-T-Z, it's clear from, from the materials, but I wanted to make clear on the record that he was represented by counsel and asked before the board took up the commission's initial order, whether he had the opportunity to provide additional briefing, and that petition was included in the, in the materials, and the agency had the opportunity to respond. So it's still at the, at the level where you're being asked to follow the recommendation of the PPC, but after the PPC's recommendation, you have some additional information submitted by the licensee and the licensee's attorney with a response from the agency. So I just want that to be on the record, that that, there's additional information that has been provided to the entire board for consideration.
But we've all had an opportunity to review that and have done so. Okay.
If I can ask a clarifying question, and this is for Marcus, do you believe there needs to be a separate vote to decide if the board will allow oral argument or not?
I construed the comments from the prior, request from, a previous licensee request on oral argument, that the board was not going to entertain oral argument, and I don't think we need a separate, a separate motion on that unless somebody reviews the materials and feel like they want to have an oral argument on it.
I haven't had any indication of that from anyone, so. Your comment that you found out about one of these through the media, if you hadn't discovered it that way, you probably would have through the rat back.
If that person had been fingerprinted, yes.
Okay, uh-huh. All right, well.
I think that's why we didn't have a rat back about it prior, because that person had been teaching for a while prior to.
Oh, okay.
They would grandfather them if you would, or you didn't have their fingerprints.
Okay, thank you.
And I would tell you, Pitts, for example, we would not have found out about that through rat back, because he's been licensed prior to 2002. That's why I've never received a rat back on any of his information, even though he was convicted of a misdemeanor. So other than the media covering that one, and obviously, there was a lot of media coverage.
But when he, if he, if this hadn't happened, and he were to renew his license at that time, he would have been finger, would be fingerprinted under our new regulations.
Assuming you adopt the new regulations, and they're in place by the time he has to renew, then yes.
All right. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Other questions? Well, then the recommended motion is, it is moved that the Kansas State Board of Education adopt the finding of fact in the conclusions of the Professional Practices Commission and approve their recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Kathy Bush, seconded by Jim McNeese. Is there further discussion? Then all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. We have a unanimous vote on that. Thank you very much. I, oh, I didn't even see that she wasn't here. Okay, I was, that was a 9-0 vote then, thank you, with Sally Cobble absent. All right. Our next item is to accept or deny the petition for reconsideration of the Daskowski case. And Mark Ferguson will.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to comment on that and make sure that it's, it's clear from the record that this board already accepted the recommendations of the Professional Practices Commission, a order adopting that was passed by the board by 9-0 vote on July 8, 2014. After the board took its action, the applicant, Jerry Daskowski, asked to have opportunity to brief certain issues, put forth whatever arguments he wanted, and it was labeled a petition for reconsideration, and then the agency had the opportunity to respond. So this board has already adopted the recommendations of the PPC, and the, the issue before the board today would be whether or not you accept or reject the applicant's petition for reconsideration. In other words, did you find something in the written materials submitted by the applicant that would either change your mind or open this up for further debate or discussion?
Then we, I thought you were, Ken, do you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay.
I have a motion, if you're ready for that.
Oh, good.
Just move to reject.
Okay, Ken Wellard?
I just move to reject his application for reconsideration.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes.
You seconded, okay. It's been moved and seconded to reject the petition for reconsideration submitted by Jerry Daskowski, and reaffirm the finding of fact and conclusion of the board in its order signed August 6, 2014. Is there discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. We do have a 10-0 vote this time. Thanks Sally for coming back. Now Scott Myers is going to give us an update on institutions of higher ed.
Is that a 1 or an exclamation point? 1, 2, 3, 4. Ah, I flew.
Your eye looks better.
Thank you. I can almost see today.
What happened?
Yeah, I've had that happen before, that's no fun.
All right. Good morning. It's a pleasure to be able to see everyone today. I called yesterday because I really couldn't. We're here today to provide a update on all the good works that are taking place within the higher ed institution, that realm of our world. I have with me today Dr. Deb Mercer, the Dean of the College of Education at K-State University, and then of course Susan Helbert here as well. Today our topics, we'll be talking about the three, well, there's many areas that go along with higher ed, of course, but the three main areas we want to hit, touch base on are the, is the accreditation cycle, and the process that takes place, the program reviews that we do, along with those accreditation, and then the standards revision, and the work that takes place there as well. Dr. Mercer's here today, she is the chair for the Professional Standards Board, and as you're aware, that's one of the pretty, pretty important committees that we use here at KSD. Underneath the Professional Standards Board is the Evaluation Review Committee, the ERC, and the ERC is where all of the accreditation reports and the program review reports go for action, and then ultimately matriculates up to you for approval. On the slide right now, you'll see we have 24 institutions in the state of Kansas offering various programs within the realm of education, just variety across the state, seven region schools, and a slew of independent colleges. Like I said, the topics for today include accreditation, the program review information, and the program standards and revision process. And with that, I'll turn this over to Dr. Mercer.
Thank you, very good. Well, good morning, it's a pleasure to be here. I serve as dean of the College of Education at Kansas State University, but truly, I'm here representing all 24 institutions of higher education in the state of Kansas that prepare teachers. So in order to be eligible to do that, to recommend to you a candidate for a teaching license in the state of Kansas, institutions go through two layers of review process. The first is for the entire unit, and the teacher education unit is defined at each institution. Sometimes that's as simple as the college of education, but more often, it includes faculty from across the campuses that help us, partner with us to prepare teachers. So a faculty member from the Department of Biology, a faculty member from the Kinesiology Department, for example. So the teacher education unit are all of the individuals on a campus that are working together to prepare teachers. And we have to be accredited by you to stay in business. The State Department, State Board of Education gives their approval for us to be able to recommend for licensure. So that layer is, is critical. That's a very high elevation view, that's looking at, is the unit preparing candidates that are knowledgeable and have the skills they need to be teachers? Do they have an assessment system that allows them to collect data, analyze that data, and make program improvements? Are their faculty qualified? Do they have the resources to be able to operate and provide a quality program? So that's a, a very broad-based view of the entire unit's quality. But then each individual program is looked at very specifically. So you saw the slide that Scott just shared, 433 programs across the state of Kansas, and each one of those submits to the State Department, a very in-depth look for that particular content area. So at K-State, last spring, I submitted my intent to submit programs for all 28 programs at Kansas State University. I'll upload those by October 1st, so there's a flurry of activity going on right now, into the digital warehouse documentation about each one of those programs, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. So I mentioned that you're the critical body, the State Board of Education must accredit us to be able to recommend teachers for licensure, but 22 of the 24 institutions have also chosen to go through the, the national accreditation process. So you may have heard of NCATE, we're transitioning to CAPE, which is the Council for Accreditation of Teacher Preparation. That's optional, but again, 22 of the institutions in Kansas have completed those requirements as well. We're moving from a five-year to a seven-year accreditation review cycle, even though we are working continuously and have reports that we submit annually, our intensive review has moved to once every seven years. So about eight or nine months prior to our accreditation visit, the institution submits an, a self-assessment report. So we analyze all of that data, we really look at ourselves closely, say, here's where we've made progress, here's where we're continuing to work, and some action steps for improvement that we have set forth for ourselves. An accreditation team is formed that reviews that report. So all of those team members have gone through training. If we're seeking national accreditation, we have national representation, as well as state representation on that, that team, and it's a very broad-based representation. So peers, colleagues from other institutions, both within the state and nationally, should we choose CAPE accreditation as well, and state team members. And then there's also a KNEA representative that serves in an observer role, but provides a great deal of insight to public schools in the state of Kansas for our teams as well. Then KSDE also sits on those teams. They're an advocate for our processes and systems within the state of Kansas, and they help our national team members understand how we operate in Kansas, and they also help ensure that the system, the processes that are in place are carried out in an ethical manner. So the teams review that off-site report, they, they do that electronically, they provide a report to the institution after they've reviewed not only that report, but a variety of exhibits and documentations that the institution has uploaded into that digital warehouse. So those are pieces of data and other documentation that we're doing what we, what we say we're doing within our institution. Then that same team comes on campus for three or four days, and they spend most of their time engaged in focus interview groups with our candidates. Here's what we read in the report. Now I would like to hear what, what your perspective is about this assessment, or these field experiences, or the quality of the faculty that you have in your, your courses. So they review more documentation, spend a great deal of time talking to candidates, to faculty, to our school partners, and then a report is written based on all of that information that they have, have systematically gone through. That team report that's written, again, if it's a national accrediting body, the team works as one, there's a national co-chair and a state co-chair, and they very much work in collaboration and with the same set of responsibilities and rights. One team, one team report is written, but at that point, the, the report goes different directions. Should the institution have chosen to seek national accreditation, it goes to CAPE, and then the report comes here to the State Department at the state level. That report is reviewed by the Evaluation Review Committee, and then eventually brought before you for a final decision, and the same process takes place at the national accrediting body. So ERC refused that report, recommends an accreditation status. The institution can request a hearing if they think more information is needed at that point, and then again, that final report comes to you for action that says, this institution, this teacher education unit is accredited and can recommend candidates for licensure. So one, one report written, but the decision pathway is separate. Because there's such high inner rate of reliability in this process, the accreditation decision is almost always the same at the state level and at the national level. Some areas for improvement may be worded a little bit differently at the, the two levels, and then it's the responsibility of the institution to respond to those as we improve in, in the process.
I believe we have a question. Kathy Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You mentioned in here, and I kind of ask now, since this is kind of the end of the accreditation part, about the data system and the data review and the data warehouse. So is there a consistent way that you look at data across all the institutions? Are there some benchmarks? Or do they vary by institution?
There's a set of, of standards that are national standards that the state of Kansas has also adopted, and so those are very broad-based standards that were held accountable to knowledge of our candidates and their, their skills, our clinical experiences, and how those are, are carried out within the program, faculty qualifications, resources. So those are very broad-based when we're looking at the unit level. And then as we drill down, there are standards at the program level, so those would be the biology standards, the elementary education standards, for, for example. So two very distinct sets, sets of standards. When we look at the assessment system at an institution, that's the responsibility of the institution. And so while we're all collecting data to meet those standards, the system itself can look very different. Some institutions have gone with a commercial product, others have developed their own system within their, their own institution.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, okay. Are there questions? Okay, so we go from those very broad standards, how are you doing as an entire unit, to very specific standards for programs. And so we, to, to maintain that approval for each licensure area, we submit a program report, again, moving from a five-year to a seven-year renewal cycle, although a new program, should an institution say, I'd really like to add this program, that can be done at any point in the process, and then we'll pick that, that program up with the institution's renewal in the next cycle. So program review results are analyzed here at the, the State Department, considered during the accreditation process. It helps us to document that our candidates have the knowledge and skills that, that are needed to be a very effective teacher. And then those programs are reviewed out just a little bit further than the external report that I mentioned earlier, and we do that about 18 months out. And so that gives us time to provide rejoinder, should we need to, and then have that documentation for the onsite team when they, they visit our campus. So again, I mentioned, I submitted a, an intent form to the State Department of Education so they knew that my programs were coming. Each and every one of those 28 programs at, at Kansas State, each and every one of the 433 programs across the state are submitted on a systematic cycle to be reviewed. Those teams are again made up of people from a variety of backgrounds. So our peers from institutions will be on those committees that have expertise in a particular area, and then we also have P-12 faculty that serve on those committees, that are teaching in that content area. So if there's a program submitted for building leadership, a program that prepares principals, there will be sitting principals in Kansas schools on those committees, as well as faculty from institutions of higher education that are preparing principals. And they come together, review that, that report. So here are the standards that the state of Kansas has established as important for building administrators, and then the institution documents, here's how we're meeting those standards. Here are the activities in which our candidates engage, here's the assessment data that helps us document that, yes, indeed, all of our candidates are, are meeting those standards. So those reviews are completed, a report is written using a template, so the final report for building administrators looks similar to elementary, so the templates are set up very, very similar, and aid us in being systematic in our review. And again, extensive data from each of our candidates is submitted with those reports. An initial report is sent to the institution, and so we read through that report, and then we have a decision to make. We agree with the team, or here are some areas that, that we think cause confusion, and we want to be able to submit a rejoinder about this program and clarify some things for, for the team. That final team report is sent to, again, ERC for consideration. They make an initial recommendation, there's yet another opportunity for input from the institution, if they would like a hearing, they can make that request, and then as a final step, it comes before you for your final, final action. So those standards are very important, they guide our programs. As the standards are changed and adopted at the State Department, then we need to go back to our programs and look at those alignment issues, and make sure that our program is indeed where it needs to be, or we may change it. So those program standards drive our programs at the institutions. And I think with that, I'll turn it back to Scott and talk, he can talk, Susan, I see the nod. Susan will talk about that process of, of standard revision.
Thanks Deb for setting that framework. So she just got, talked to you about the accreditation. So she just got, talked to you about the accreditation process, the program review process. But really, without standards to drive those processes, you know, we wouldn't have consistency in order to judge the programs and the units. So program standards are very important to establish the requirements for each of those programs, those 400 and some programs that our Kansas higher ed institutions offer. We also use them in our current regulations to help establish professional learning requirements for teachers to help maintain their license, so professional learning that they do can be related to the professional education standards. And then finally, as Deb mentioned, the higher ed institutions are continuously reviewing their programs against those standards to help them monitor and to make updates to their programs. So there's two main types of program standards when we think about them. The first one is a set of professional education standards, and those are those common knowledge and skills that teachers across all the content areas need to have. And those standards say, "This is what you should know and be able to do in order to help students come out and be able to face this world at the end of their higher ed." The professional ed standards reflect the interstate, this is a big mouthful, but the INTAS standards, which stands for the Interstate Teacher Assessment and Support Consortium. And you can see that the basic premise of those INTAS standards is that an effective teacher must be able to integrate content knowledge with the specific strengths and needs of students to ensure that all students learn and perform at high levels. So our, the Kansas professional ed standards are modeled very closely against the INTAS standards. And we'll see what those INTAS standards are in the next slide very briefly. So we have the professional ed standards, and then we also have a set of content program standards for every area that we offer programs leading to a license. So these would be the program standards if an institution wants to offer a math teacher preparation program, or a school leadership program, or school counselor program. So there's a set of program standards, and then that's what, when we look at program review for each of the institution's programs, they're looked at in terms of assessments, how their candidates do in those programs based on these standards. So let me just, this, in a nutshell, high level, these are the INTAS standards, and you can see that they're broken down into four categories, learner and learning, content knowledge, instructional practice, and then professional responsibility, which includes ethical practice, professional learning, and then collaboration. So these are the broad categories that the INTAS and our professional education standards. And remember, these are the set that regardless of your content area, your program will deliver the skills and competencies related to these standards.
I think Sally Cobble has a question.
Sure. Maybe I should have written this down to ask you later, but, Rebecca. So when you look at alternative programs coming in from other things out of the state, they must have these four things. Am I?
Yes, if you'll remember, you've heard about the plans of study?
Yes.
That they ask those that have to end up going through the review committee process. So these are related to, these would be the professional ed standards, that those plans of study. So when they're looking, they might ask the person, you know, learner differences, what do you know about differentiated instruction? When they're talking to that person.
Other questions before we move on? Okay. Deana Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When you have a bullet that says 10 standards, and then a bullet says standards outline, there are 10 items?
Yes.
Under there, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
These are the outlined form. So under learner and learning, there's three standards.
Okay, thank you.
And this is the broad topic of each of those standards.
So there aren't additional, an additional?
No, if you were to see the full text of this, there would be a description of, spelled out, a text of what learner development, what that standard is around learner development. And then it's broken down further into knowledge and performance, the what you should know and what you should be able to do.
All right, thank you.
And you'll see, my last slide is kind of a template to let you get a better vision of that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Jim McNeese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You've got these 10 standards up here in, you know, outlined form, and maybe this is later, because I haven't gone ahead in my PowerPoint, but maybe later. But where can I go to find more information about the 10 standards up here?
We have a handout, if you're interested, that gives the text of each of those standards. And then INTAS falls under the large umbrella of CCSSO, and I can provide you with the website to get the full text of those standards, or we can provide you with a copy of them.
That would be great. I'd like that.
Okay. So there's a need to update all of the program standards. They've been in place, a number of them, for quite a while, so because the knowledge and the skills that educators need to know has changed. We're in the process of updating all of the program standards. And for management, we've broken it down into three phases. So the first phase, as you can see, that is near completion. We have several sets of standards that are complete, ready to ultimately bring to you in the next month or two. We have another phase that's working on it, but they're not quite finished. And then finally, we're just beginning to solicitate nominations and organizing teams for the final set of standards. So Phase One, special ed, low incidence, high incidence, those are the standards for the added endorsements for adaptive and functional. The leadership standards, early childhood, unified elementary. All of the, you'll see in a minute, the process. We have the agriculture counseling and our set of professional ed standards that model the INTAS standards. Those have all gone out for all the comment phases that we go through, so they are in the final version.
Susan, would you elaborate a little bit more on the process? You mentioned going out for comments, but is there a committee that's in charge of developing these phases?
Sure.
Who's involved?
Let me just skip, these are the next phase, we'll come back to this. Okay, here's how we do this. Again, we, any work we do, we utilize teams from the field. So the review design teams of the current standards, you can see the makeup of it. Again, it's higher ed faculty, classroom people out there teaching this content, administrators, and we have pulled in parents, especially for the early childhood and the elementary, and then appropriate KSDE content consultants. We do seek nominees from appropriate organizations, USA or KNEA, for example. And then the teams, as a resource, they don't just come to a room with a blank sheet of paper and start drafting standards. Obviously, they have the old, the current standards that are being revised. But we also, there's the SPAS, which are the Specialty Professional Association. There are a number of those. For example, NAEYC, which is an early childhood one, ISTI, technology standards. So they're provided with those standards. When those are available, they take a look at those P-12 content standards, the curriculum standards, national board standards in the content areas where they're available. So whatever information we can provide them to get them started, we do so. And then teams come together, they review and draft, as long as it takes them to feel satisfied with the draft. The draft is posted for comment on the KSDE website, usually that's the last stage. Prior to that, we do send them to those SPA groups whenever those are applicable. What they do, they take a look at it, and they send us back information on whether or not those standards are aligned to their SPA standards. And then after the comment, they're given back to the team if needed to make edits, and ultimately, the final draft is sent to you for approval.
Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, you kind of answered my question, because I see, when we're talking about program standards, I mean, every single department or area that has a license then has a program standards review.
Correct.
And so right now, for instance, with the special education, the low incidence and the high incidence, with our new license that we'll basically be adopting today, they will be reviewing that based on that, which will then give them guidance as far as preparing a baccalaureate direct entry special ed?
Correct.
Program.
Yes.
Okay.
And we have a team ready to do that.
As soon as?
As soon as we have a regulation that would allow it. And that's a good point, because, for example, to create a direct entry special ed, you're going to adopt regs that allows to do that. But the pieces that required reg changes were middle school, the really important piece now will be the group that develops the standards that says, "This is the core content. These are the knowledge and skills that that teacher needs to come out with related to both gen ed and special ed populations." So that's a really important group, and I know we have institutions anxious to get their hands on those standards to go forward. Because until they have the standards, Deb can't take those and create a program and start through that process, so.
Thank you.
Okay. And here's where we are, coming back to this slide, the next groups. And many in Phase Two, they're well on their way to development. And again, Phase Three, those are the ones that we're beginning to solicit nominations. And one, finally, this gives you an idea of the template that they use and how the final set of standards will appear. So the actual standard is that top box that starts with oral language. And then below that is, it breaks down the standard into critical functions. So this is the first function. So when you look at the full standard, they're saying, "The first important thing is teachers of young children understand the importance of oral language." So then there's knowledge and professional skills that are broken out, content knowledge, what do I need to know, professional skills, what do I need to be able to do in my practice? So this is the template that all of the standards review group, this is how, if you look at the INTAS standards, this is how they are also formatted. Are there questions?
Sally Cobble.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for putting this on the agenda, or thank us, or whatever. I have found this extremely helpful. And since I've been on here for eight years, I never have understood this process, and this really, really has helped. It isn't something that happens overnight.
That's true.
And, but it does, I still, I still have, I still have this fear that we are behind a process when we need a certain instructor. Like, this career and technical ed that you've heard me for how many years, me worry about that, we're developing these pathways, but will our licensure be right for these pathways? And are we needing to make adjustments, and what barriers? And I need reassurance that we aren't five years behind providing a teacher for what we need tomorrow. Do you understand what I'm, my question?
And let me see how I want to approach this. In the career and tech ed world, they're not necessarily going back and completing an approved program. We're giving them a credential based on their skill or expertise in that occupation. So, for example, the Career and Technical Education Specialized Certificate, that's in the set of regs that you're going to vote on for adoption in just a few minutes. So, for example, I had 501 contact me yesterday, and they said, "We just got approved to do the pathway that has the firefighting and emergency responder in it." And they had an individual that was a classroom teacher, a licensed teacher, but I was able to say that he hadn't had training, the appropriate credential, to train in that, in the firefight area. But there was another individual who did, and I was able to say, "I can offer you a Career and Tech Ed Specialized Certificate that is perfect for this situation." So for the Career and Tech Ed area, we've had, for a number of years, a credential. We've added different layers to allow just those who want them to come in for one or two days. So I think that we're able to respond well to that particular area.
That's all for right now. I've got another question, but I've got to formulate.
Deana Horst. Thank you, Madam Chair. When you're dealing with the program content standards, how do those relate to the standards that then we adopt for the teaching of students? So, in other words, is there a connection between, for example, I know art, for example, is looking very quickly at working on new standards for how we teach students art. But are the art, those being trained, be art teachers, are they being trained, are we making certain they're being trained to teach those standards in the way we have, what the standards we have approved?
Okay, let me restate if, to make sure I understand what you're asking. If you're asking, you're talking about the curriculum standards?
Right.
That P-12 students, that's what they're expected to know. Certainly, when we're developing program standards for the teacher prep programs, that's one set of things that that design group looks at to make sure that what they say a teacher needs to know and be able to do to help those kids be successful in that content area, certainly, it needs to align with what we expect the students themselves to come out knowing and being able to do.
But are the changes that may be made in a program in that seven-year cycle, is it coordinating with the fact that new standards have been or are in the process of being developed? Are we kind of aligning that seven-year cycle with what's happening in the curricular standards? So students are being trained?
Okay.
To be, to teach those curricular standards, so there's not a gap when they?
Okay.
When they come out of school?
Sure.
And I'm not thinking it could be in any content area.
Okay. I'm going to answer, and then I'm going to allow Deb, if she wants to, comment on how the universities look at their programs for revision and updates. So- So, right now, we have this big project because we've had a set of standards that, over time, some of them has been tweaked as we've made adjustments to the K-12 standards. But, right now, we're kind of unique because we're looking at the entire set of program standards. But certainly, as the P-12 standards change, as needed, we will look at those, give it to a group to say, do we need to adjust these? But, so, we're kind of unique right now, we're looking at the big group. But then, I think we need to get Dr. Mercer's perspective on then, how the university continuously monitors their programs and makes those adjustments.
Thank you. That would be helpful.
I'd be happy to address that. One responsibility institutions have is teaching pedagogy and lesson planning, and how are we ensuring that students in the classrooms are learning what they need to learn? And it's those content standards for students that I believe you're referencing. And so, as the state makes a shift in standards, we make that shift in how we teach and what the requirements are for our students preparing lesson plans to go out and implement. And so, we work with cooperating teachers, mentor teachers in the classroom, so we know where they're at in their sequencing. And then, we make sure that our candidates' lesson plans are aligned to those standards. So as those standards shift, then we immediately make that shift, and we're using what the school system is using.
So, you're doing that at the university level? Not necessarily at, at the, we're not necessarily always doing it here. You're doing it locally at your university.
And that's something, we're held accountable to all of you, that we're doing that and making that shift and making sure that we're aligned with what you're requiring of students in the classrooms.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the program that maybe had been approved, the standards that may have been approved for that content area, may be on paper a little different here in the department than what you've shifted, but it may not be totally up to date here. Is that a fair, a fair thought?
The standards tend to be written very broadly. So I'm thinking about what Sally just asked about career and tech ed and being ready and on the cutting edge. I think that's a responsibility that institutions of higher education have. So the standard may say that we're using technology to enhance teaching and learning. So it's going to be a little broader. It's not saying, are you teaching, you must teach your candidates how to use a smart board, or every student must have an iPad to enhance learning. It's going to say, are you using technology? And so that gives us the flexibility to shift and make sure that we're using and preparing our candidates for what they're seeing in the classrooms.
And that's good to know, that it's not rigidly set down.
Right.
So, thank you.
There is that flexibility.
So, for example, we adopted the next generation science standards last year. They emphasize particularly at the elementary level, hands-on experimentation, discovery, and the process instead of just factual. Has the department looked at that? And are teachers being exposed to more strategies for incorporating that into their instruction?
Absolutely. I have two faculty members that helped draft that set of standards. This summer, I received a quick list of, here are things we need to upgrade in our science teaching labs on campus so that our candidates have access to their own resources and their classes.
Great. Okay, thank you. Janet Waugh, before, Janet Waugh had her name up there with the questions, so can I go ahead and entertain our questions? Janet Waugh.
Janet Waugh is really Sally Cobble. Sally Cobble left her computer in the hotel room.
I thought it was easier than me sitting here going like this. Okay, I got a couple of questions. And Deb, these may be for you. Okay. I'm a firm believer that ESL should be part of the degree coming out, because I have school districts out there that are having to use money to pay for teachers to get ESL degrees. This may have already been taken care of, and I don't know about it, okay? So I believe that that should be part of the process for every teacher in the state of Kansas to do. I think that's an efficiency thing for the schools and their money, okay? Now, where are we on that? And I got two other questions after that. Where are we on that? Is that our board decision? Is that your decision? Have we made that decision? Where in my belief are we on that, and is that not ever going to happen?
Currently, that's an added endorsement. And so, people, universities choose to offer that program if they so choose. And it's not a part of general graduation requirements at this point. Individuals may add it through testing, or they can go through a program and then complete the test as well. But as we speak, it's not a part of graduation requirements in Kansas.
I'm not real sure that that ought to be an added endorsement. I'm not so sure it shouldn't be part of every teacher coming out in the state of Kansas the way our, the dynamics of our school. I'm not so sure we're not in a paradigm here in which we need to change that.
And the professional ed standards, remember, that's common across all content areas. To an extent, they do try to address and build in that every teacher will come out with basic competencies and knowledge in areas like ESOL, special education, it's that whole differentiated instruction and adjusting instruction to the students. But, so there is, you know, at a basic level, some of that in. And so, is that enough for that candidate to be able to go take the ESOL test and pass it? Some of them it is.
Okay. I think we're behind on that. I think that ought to be part of the total program. Deb, on the units to get a degree, that is where the schools can be competitive with each other, right? I get a lot of comments, just for your, to take back to your group, I do get a lot of comments that they feel like the number of units that somebody has to get for a degree to teach, they really, maybe not all of those units are necessary, that they could be combined in other, to make it less. I know the schools have to make money, I know that, but that's a comment that I receive a lot that I thought maybe your organization might need to know. And I really think that it's coming out of people that are going back to get the degree, how much more they need to get their certificate. And I really think that that's where comments that are coming to me are. And I guess my third question to you is, is there anything this board needs to do or rethink? Are we putting up any barriers for the colleges that are keeping them from doing what they want to do where they see the need? We may or may not agree. But if, in Kansas, if we really have the philosophy that we're only as good as the classroom teacher, then we need to make sure that they're coming out with the tools they need to make our schools the best. And times change, things happen, and I would like to know from your committee if there's anything that we ever need to work together. Sometimes, the up-down approach isn't always best. And I think in Kansas, we have a pretty good communication, and everybody talks together from your department to that department. But if there's anything barriers, I think this board would probably like to know what those are. We're asking them to do a whole lot, and I don't know if we're giving them, you know, the tools they need to do that. So, that's my only comments to you.
Everyone wants to hear what you say.
Very good. I appreciate your comments. Sally, we have to do a better job retaining our teachers in Kansas classrooms. We just have to. I think that's our most critical area of need right now. We do not want to lose a highly effective teacher out of the classroom. The State Department does a study every year asking, why are you leaving? And so, we have some longitudinal data, we have some issues that we can, I think, work collaboratively to help address. We're producing a number of teachers every year, but if we look at that retention data over five years, I think you hit on the key point, we're asking them to do a great deal. And what type of support structures do we have in place that really help those early career teachers? So that's something, we're doing a great deal of discussion regarding, on my campus, the field as a whole across the state is doing a great deal. I don't think it's anything any one entity can do in and of themselves, but I think it's an area where we really need to work together. And I really appreciate Scott's vision of relicensing teachers. And that's beginning to really move along in powerful ways. So instead of, take X number of college credits and you can renew, and it doesn't really matter what those credits are in, or sit through professional development meetings and we'll renew your license, but really looking at, where do I need to grow as an educator? Where do I need help? Where do I need support? And then, being able to implement a very individualized plan for my own professional learning, I think is one step that will help us with that retention. Because then, I start to build skills in areas where I know I need to improve. And that's powerful. That's powerful. So, I think really getting our minds around this retention issue and making sure we keep the very best teachers in classrooms in the state of Kansas is critical.
Kathy Bush had a question. I'm not sure who you're addressing it to, Kathy, so.
Yeah, I don't know. Thank you, Madam Chair. If you take the slide back to the one that says the two types of program standards, yeah, that one. When I talk to folks in school districts, and they talk about their new folks, so it kind of tags in a little bit with what you said, what they have, what they tell me is that most issues that come up with these new teachers, that they have to non-renew or whatever it is that happens, have a tendency to be not in the program, or the content program standards. They have a pretty good background, pretty good strength there, but it's in the professional education standards, that those folks that they have to let go have a tendency to have problems there. So then, if you'd move forward to the phase one, I notice that you're, in phase one, you have professional education. So as you look at that program standard, I guess maybe what, because, you know, I don't talk to everybody throughout the state, but a number of school districts that have indicated that that is a concern area, which would then lead to that retention piece. It might be good to maybe survey some of those school districts, or lots of school districts, and see, what are those issues that they're seeing with folks that when they have to non-renew, which we hate to have to have that happen, because again, that impacts that retention? What are those issues that they're seeing? And then, are there some modifications that we can make? Number one, in the initial program, as far as the baccalaureate program, but then again, maybe as part of the mentoring piece that goes beyond that than the school districts are involved in. I think maybe that might be helpful to get some data from those school districts, because that's the kind of information that I hear from school districts when they have to go through that non-renewal process. It has a tendency to be into the professional ed side and not the content area.
Kathy, if I may, there are several initiatives underway, beginning, that I believe will speak to what you're discussing there. One is, through the professional development school movement, we very consciously last year broadened that to include PK-12. And so, we brought together superintendents and representatives from higher ed, basically sat around a table and said, what do you need? You know, what do you need from us? And what can we do to better provide for you? So that conversation is beginning in a systemic manner. The, a couple other items or initiatives taking place. You mentioned the mentoring. You'll be addressing the, adopting a regulation here a little bit, where we'll be able to move toward firmer guidelines around the mentoring. Because if you go out to the 286 districts, say you have a mentoring program, many of them say they do, but what they have is an induction program, which is, here's where the copy area is, and here's when your recess period is. And so, we're putting that, we're going to systemize that. Deb alluded to revisiting some licensing. I call up the bridge, looking to get the higher ed folk and the PK-12 folk together much more from just the initial license to the professional license. And so, maintaining a relationship from the time they're in pre-service into the first couple of years of their actual professional service itself. So a person didn't just throw them the keys and say, okay, now go forth and teach. I do believe we're putting forth far better prepared teachers today than when I went into the field, you know, 28 years ago. They're better prepared to be quality, learner-ready teachers day one. But it's still, we do lose people after the first five years, and there's a reason for that. And part of it has to do with mentoring. So, we're doing a better job, but it's also a very difficult profession, obviously. And so, there are efforts underway, we're not there, but we're working toward it.
Jim McNeese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Scott, I would agree with you 100% that the candidates who are going out into the field right now in the last 10 years have improved dramatically from not just my time when I came out in the 70s, but, you know, the candidates that I saw over my years of interviewing folks and then working with first-tier teachers. I do agree that, also, that we have to do a better job of helping our students regardless of age, because there's a real change in the age dynamic that's coming out as well. Be more prepared for the workload. One thing I don't hear in these different commissions and different things that go on in examining what's going on in education, is just how hard teachers have to work to make the classroom successful. My daughter used to yell at me when I was in the field about, you know, you're always, every Sunday, you go to school and work. Why do you do that? You know, why can't you stay home? I called her up recently on a Sunday, and she was in the classroom working. You know, I just wish we could in some way communicate to the public that teachers are, work very, very hard to be successful. Now, there are those that we all know that make up their lesson plan on the way to work, you know, and we all pick on that one, that N of one, you know, and that's difficult. But especially in the transition, when they first come in, the hours that they have to spend in preparation for classes, and when you just grade 135 papers and you find out how hard it is. Create the test for the 135 papers. Create the lesson for the 135. So, that said, there is the other issue that we have, you know, the professional, we have the content knowledge, which is improving tremendously. But I want to focus for a moment on the professional skills. Those are vitally important. And there's been questions at the board and questions with some of our licensure, and I've had questions from an interesting cross-section of people as we look at new licensure, for those that have no pedagogy background, you know, that somehow this is going to come out. I don't think we've done a really good job as a profession defining what pedagogy actually means, because it's so nebulous, it's can, you know, it's all kinds of stuff, you know? Nor have we explained that teaching, we call it a skill, but honing a skill, whether you're a minor league baseball player, a major league baseball player, or just. a minor league baseball player or a major league baseball player or just jumping in with your dad and throwing the ball for the first time, yeah, some people can do things naturally, but most of us can't. And there are things that make even good players better. There are things that make good teachers better. They're constructing a test, constructing a lesson in itself, using, understanding multiple intelligences and learning styles and what have you. We haven't done a good job of explaining that. Because there are people out there that think you can just walk in a classroom and boom, you got it. When really, the number one reason I see students, teachers fail is the workload, but the second reason is classroom management. And classroom management is directly tied to pedagogy, and we don't make that link. If you're a good teacher and you're well organized and you've got good tests and good lessons and good understanding of who your clients are, your students, you know, you minimize. It's not through rules, laws, and regulations that we control classrooms. That's the last place. It's through pedagogy. And when I've had people come from industry in who are very bright, if they're not ready to control a classroom, I don't care how bright they are, they're going to die in the vine, or how much we give students in their baccalaureate programs. So I would love to see us work closer in developing an understanding of what it means to be a teacher, how hard it is to be a really good teacher, how the good teachers work. We're very hard and are very committed, you know, and talk more about them and their skills and what gets them there, because it's a bigger issue than just, you know, you can go in there because you know something about something, you know. We haven't defined pedagogy for the public, or even for some of us, or in some cases, linked it to what makes, why does pedagogy create the successful and effective teacher? Thank you.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you. I want to start with an apology to my fellow board members for how much I'm going to monopolize the conversation when we go on retreat. I want to apologize ahead of time. I could start talking and talk all day about this. And I'm going to keep it brief, I promise. But no amount of pedagogy will prepare any instructor, any teacher at any level to effectively teach an unfamiliar language or discipline. So I'll start with that. I came in here swinging for the fences, saying you don't have to go to teachers' college to be a great teacher, and I gave this card to Jim Porter yesterday so that he would be on board with where I was coming from when I first got here. It's now codified into law that you don't have to be a graduate of a college of education to teach certain technical subjects in secondary school. That is a step in the right direction. I have promised my fellow board members to try to answer this question. What are those essential elements of pedagogy that are required, that we need to insist on for early primary, later primary, intermediate, and special ed? Dr. Mercer and I had an hour-long conversation a little more than a month ago about that very thing. I've met with Rick Ginsburg. I had a conversation with Tanya Merrigan in Blue Valley, who is the, her title is something like Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction for Blue Valley. She called a meeting with two elementary principals and two middle school principals, and we talked for an hour. And I got to tell you, it's hard to answer that question. What is it about pedagogy that's essential for our teachers? Because I know there is something there for the teachers of the little ones. But I also know that we will have a much better system if we have a better distinction between primary and secondary. Because by the time a kid gets to be 16 years old, the kid has to step up and the teacher has to have all sorts of content knowledge. And the classroom management, hey, if we're trying to get kids to sit still and pay attention and be studious when they're 16 or 17, the horse is damn near out of the barn. So there's a lot to do. And I promise, I'm not going to monopolize the conversation today, because we're not going to fix it today. But I was proud to be a member of this board yesterday when, to a person, we stood up for the little guy yesterday. I was proud to be a member of this body. And I will continue to be proud to be a member of this body, because we're working for Kans and families. And I'm sounding like a politician now, it's not even election year for me. So again, I apologize to my fellow board members for how much I'm going to have to say when we go on retreat. Thank you very much.
Scott and Susan, now it's your turn. We've bombarded you with questions and I think interrupted your presentation, so do you have further?
Yeah, final word is, I absolutely am proud of the efforts and the work taking place at the board level, all the way through higher ed, through PK-12, as the greater educational community is shoring up and coming together for a, you know, common good. We may not all agree on how we get there, but we are grappling with the conversations and we're moving forward. And I will tell you, you know, I've been in this position now for two years, and, you know, previous to coming here, yes, I had a cup of coffee at higher ed, but I didn't really know that community very well. And it's a wonderful community. As I said, if Deb weren't sitting here, they're fine folk within the work, and they really are just like all of us, just trying to figure out the best way forward so as to provide the best for our clientele and for future of Kansas. I do want to take one last moment to introduce to you to our newest education program consultant for, with KSE, and this is Dr. Katherine Schpindling. Stand up, Katherine. She is our lead consultant with higher ed. And Katherine is making great gains just getting to know people. And as someone said, it is a language, and we're trying to learn that, Katherine's learning the language. But the first step is to set up the relationships, and she's doing a fine job along that line. So with that, we are completed unless you have any other questions.
Are there other questions? Well, thank you very much for helping us understand what happens through this whole process. As other board members have said, we hadn't really had an update on this recently, and this has been very valuable. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Okay, next, we are going to act on KAR 91-1-214, Criminal History Records Check. And we will need a motion to adopt the proposed, this proposed regulation, and it will be a roll call vote. So Scott, did you have something to bring forth?
Not really in all candor. Usually I would give you a response to comments from yesterday, but there were none. You've already received the comments and the questions from the Kansas Legislative Research Department, that was in your packet. Those questions will be answered in our response to them when we file with the Secretary of State. If you have any questions or concerns about their comments, I'm more than happy to speak to them.
So are there questions before I call for the motion? Then do I hear a motion that we adopt, I want to be sure I say it right, the proposed regulation? Deana Horst moves. Steve Roberts seconds. Are there questions or comments before we have our roll call vote? Okay, then I'll turn it over to Peggy to take care of that.
I'll run by alphabetically, as opposed to how you're sitting. John Bacon.
Yes.
Kathy Bush.
Yes.
Carolyn Campbell.
Yes.
Sally Cobble.
Yes.
Deana Horst.
Yes.
Jim McNeese.
Yes.
Steve Roberts.
Yes.
Jana Shaver.
Yes.
Janet Waugh.
Yes.
Ken Willard.
Yes.
It's a 10-0.
Thank you all.
We have another one. Oh, Susan's doing that. Next, we are going, we had the public hearing yesterday on licensure regulations, 91-1-200, 91-1-201, 202, 203, 204, and 220. So Susan, did you have any comments before we?
Sure. As Scott indicated, normally I would present staff response to the public hearing, but again, we had no comments on this set of regulations, and the joint committee had no comments on this set of regulations. If you'd like to refresh your memory, this set of regulations were also the set that went through as temporary regs. I do have a slide, if you'd like me to walk through, just the highlights, if you need that. That's up to you.
Why don't we go ahead, just so we're clear on what we're dealing with here?
Okay, as a reminder, you know, you're voting on all of these, so we remember that we had started through with this set of regulations that we'd been working on, and then the House bill came in, we had to insert some additional pieces. So in 200, some of these are real simple. We defined a standard license. We had to do that because of some of the other licenses that are defined later on. In 201, that's our regulation that lists the types of licenses. I didn't put a slide up there. We inserted STEM as a type of license in that one. And 202, this lists all of the endorsements. We had some name changes to adaptive and functional. We also included a new endorsement for the direct entry at the elementary and at the secondary level, what those endorsements will be called. And then we changed back from the old, early, you know, we had that long name for elementary, and we're changing back and saying, we're just going to call it elementary again. And then in 203, there were some changes to the leadership licenses, mainly, the main one was that the requirement for experience was raised from three to five years. We addressed the teacher leader regulation that had a sunset date because of the development of the assessment, and we inserted an extension of that. There were some other tweaks, like clarifying what the GPA requirements were for both the leadership and the school specialist. And then probably one of the more important pieces is the mentoring, where we formalized that requirement, and as Scott was explaining, kind of systematizing mentoring across the state by saying that those programs that the districts are providing have to be based on a set of guidelines. And then finally, this would be where the new STEM license, that was one of the legislative mandates, and that's those, if you hold a degree in a STEM area and you have work experience in that, and you have an offer for hire, that we would do that. One of the other regulations, the secondary, if you're coming from out of state, you don't have to verify what type of program. If you have an offer for hire, that's in 203 also. And then 204, that's the out-of-state regulation. So we did the same kinds of edits for leadership that we did for the in-state folks. This, and we enhanced some of the experience options for people coming in at the professional level. And then this is the one that we're seeing the most effects on right now, is if you did an all route, but you have the five years of experience, three consecutive in the same district, that you don't have to go through the review committee, we just bring you in at the professional license level. And that's probably, right now, that has had the most effect on our applicants. We were able to go back and look at review committee cases over the last two years, and we were able to offer, go ahead and issue licenses. It's cut down our review committee meeting in October, only has four personal appearances opposed to 10 or 12 that we've been seeing. So that one is, been working well. And then finally, 220, that's the regulation around the career and technical education kinds of certificates. And this is where we created the specialized certificate, allowing those people with the appropriate credential experience to come in, and we would get, we'll give them the specialized certificate. This also contains revisions of that restricted and full technical certificate that's been in place for a number of years. So in a real nutshell, those are the changes.
Thank you. Are there questions? I see Ken Willard has one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This, on the special ed piece of this, removes the requirement for a master's degree for to get an endorsement, is that correct?
The special ed never required a master's degree to add that endorsement. A lot of the universities had the option that you could earn, some of them billed it, because by the time you took the coursework of the approved program, they wanted to offer that as an option, so some of those programs built that in. But what we did add for special ed was that ability to, for institutions to do the direct entry program at the bachelor's level.
Okay. Thank you.
John Bacon.
Thank you. When I was reading through this, the only criticism that I had was that we don't define STEM very well, in my view. I guess we're just assuming that everybody knows it's science, technology, engineering, and math, but it refers to the Kansas statute, I guess, but we don't, in our definition, we don't ever really define the subject areas. It's part of that license.
We don't, but in the requirements for the license, we spell out what those degrees are, what those areas are.
So there's, it's defined in another area? It's not included in this?
Well, in the definition reg, where it's...
On page 41, it, well, I don't know what page it is, our page 41.
Okay.
It defines STEM, and it's in quotes. Excellent. Page 5, I think, the top page, you're page 5.
I don't have the same numbers, but within 91-1-203...
200.
Okay, right. And that's the definition reg, so that just says, when we refer to that later on in the regulations, this is what...
You have to assume that everybody knows what STEM is.
Well, in 91-1-203, it says, it talks about, it names life science, physical science, earth and space science, mathematics, engineering, computer technology, finance, or accounting. And it spells those out. 91-1-203 is a reg that says, these are the requirements to get that particular kind of license.
And what page was that on? Was that on 50, our page 50?
It would be the second to the last page of 91-1-203. Look on page...
I'm getting there.
Okay. And there should be a little M that says STEM license, and then it goes into, into all of the requirements to get that.
Okay.
Okay. And so there, it gives the specifics.
Okay.
Does that help?
That's better.
Okay.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there any change to the licensure for the gifted endorsement by what we're doing today?
Not in this set of regs, no.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Then do I hear a motion that we adopt the proposed licensure regulations? Moved by Kathy Bush, seconded by Jim McNeese. All in favor, raise your right hand. Oh, sorry. Peggy.
Again, I'll run through alphabetically. John Bacon.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Carolyn.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
Deana.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Jana.
Yes.
Janet.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
It's 10-0.
Thank you.
We are going to take a 15-minute break, as scheduled at this point. We'll resume our meeting two minutes before a quarter till.
Well, it appears that all of our board members are in the room, so I will ask them to conclude their conversations, and Dr. Christman and Von Lauer will give us an update on our commissioner search. search.
So now we can take our full two hours, and, no, we wouldn't do that, thank you, good morning. The advertisements for the Kansas Commissioner position are out, uh, we have enlisted with, uh, the, uh, Top School Jobs, which is a part of Ed Weekly, AAS, NASB, uh, we're also on Facebook, Twitter, School Boards, School Board Administration, simplyhired.com, those we found are very successful websites. We also, as soon as we, uh, received the position, uh, we notified our consultants, and, uh, I've already had four calls from them, uh, them asking for additional information about the position and so on. As I indicated to you earlier, historically, what we found is that applicants will flood the office the last week before the applications are due. Uh, we're closing on October the twentieth, uh, at this point, we have sixteen inquiries into the position, we have two completed applications, those represent five different states at this point. Uh, again, we're keeping the rest of it confidential, but, uh, we've had inquiries, uh, from consultants in Nebraska, Arkansas, New Mexico, Louisiana, so, uh, I think that at least the word is out there, and they are looking for, for viable candidates for us. A couple of things that, that we'd like to talk about, uh, with you today, as well as, as later on in, in the meeting, um, the possibility of, uh, involving others in the interview process, when we would do this normally as a superintendency, we would involve various, uh, focus groups, uh, that would have direct contact with that person, these would be teachers, administrators, and so on. Considering that, uh, we sent out, uh, over Survey Monkey, as well as visiting face-to-face with several of your stakeholder groups, uh, I think you might want to consider that if the applicants that were, are selected to come in for the interview, would possibly interview formally with you as the board, and possibly the department heads from KSDE, those are the ones they're gonna be working with, uh, on a daily basis. This would actually allow you, if, if you thought about doing that, to, uh, conduct two interviews per day. Uh, instead of, of having it over three days, you could possibly, if there were three candidates or four candidates, however many come to the top, then, uh, you could compress that, and, uh, would give you, in a very short timeframe, the opportunity to look at the top candidates, and possibly, uh, position you for making a better decision at that point, so, uh, you might just kind of think about that, we'll, we'll talk about that later on, uh, today, but, uh, that's one of the things that we've talked about doing. We present the candidates to you on October the twenty-ninth, and as I indicated, what we'll do is, uh, in executive session, we'll present, uh, to you what our recommendations are of the top candidates that most closely match that criteria that you identified, and we'll be able to speak to each candidate on why we feel they most closely match these criteria, however, we don't, uh, recommend that you hire any person, that is your responsibility. But we will have, every applicant that is completed will be with us that day, the, the files, and we will be prepared to speak to you on anyone that has applied for that position. Uh, why wasn't Von Lauer included in the top candidates? Well, because, uh, his references, uh, didn't check out, or we felt like that he didn't complete the application, or we'll be able to tell you why we did not recommend that person, as well as recommending the top people. The, again, I just want to reiterate, ultimately, the decision on who you call in to interview and who you hire is your decision, we do not do that, that's your decision, we just try and provide that decision-making model for you that makes it a little easier. Uh, do you have any questions, uh, at this point?
On the twenty-ninth? On the twenty-ninth, um, how much, I don't recall how long, how much time, uh, we have scheduled or need to schedule for that.
I, I would recommend probably a minimum of three hours, uh, it may actually be-
Maybe it'd take longer.
It may be longer, uh, it, it would depend on, uh, what we would like for each board member to do is to have access to all the files that you want to view, and, uh, they will be extensive, and that will take some time to do that, I mean, you'll be working by yourself and, and, around a table, reviewing the files, making notes, and asking questions, and so on, so that itself does take some time to do that.
Peggy? Scheduled nine to noon, but I can certainly extend that, I mean, we'll be in this room, so that's not a problem.
So if we needed to resume after lunch, we could?
It, it, it won't take us long, most of the time will be spent in each board member looking at the application.
And you'll be in executive session during that time, so it'll just be an extension of that.
But we could extend that if we need to, okay, all right. Other questions? Carolyn Campbell?
Thank you, I guess I didn't quite understand, in the interviewing process, you, I thought you were saying that we could maybe, uh, the board visit and see about inviting other folks to be a, a part of that?
Yes, you can do that, that, that is your option, that's what we usually do, but I would just for, uh, as an option for you to consider, you might want to consider the department heads at KSDE, uh, and the school board, if you want other focus groups or other people to visit with the candidates and ask them questions, that is your call, absolutely.
Okay, so that's something-
No, that is your call.
Okay.
My concern is, making it a group so large that it's unwieldy, we have ten members on our board, where most of the school boards you deal with have seven.
Well, and, and I, as I think about some of the, the stakeholder groups, uh, if you were the executive director of, say, the administrators, would you feel comfortable in making that decision, would you want your board of directors there, and so on, so, uh, the situation becomes, as you say, almost unyielding, and where do you, where do you cut it off, and so on, but if there are people that you would like to call in, and, and specific people to meet the candidate, ask them questions, and so on, that is absolutely your call.
So they can participate, maybe not during our formal interview, but have some groups that meet-
Well, they would not just be in the formal interview, what we would do is set up a time, let's say that, uh, a candidate would formally interview with the board at ten o'clock, and let's say at nine o'clock, they might, uh, sit down and visit with your department head.
Yeah, okay.
And, and the department heads would have a list of fifteen or twenty questions that we would like to look at, to be sure that they represent you in a positive way, make sure they're legal questions, and then after they visit with that candidate, as a consensus, they would answer one of two questions, they would say, "What do you see as the strengths of this candidate?", and then they would say, "What questions do you have about this candidate?" That then would be sealed in an envelope and given to you as, as the chair, and then after you, either after you interview that person, or as you're making your decisions, then you can open that up, and what it does, it gives you a different set of eyes, it gives you a, a perspective of a person from a lot of different people, and by consensus that you could say, "Well, yes, I, I confirmed that, I saw it in this person", or, you know, "I didn't see that, maybe they did, did anyone else see that?", and so it just, again, makes the decision-making process a little better.
I had misunderstood what you were proposing, I think that's-
Would not be part of the, the interview would be, would be between you and the candidate, absolutely.
Uh-huh, okay. Are there other questions or comments? Well, we will see you later today, this morning, thank you. Our next, uh, item is board reports and future agenda items. I did want to mention, uh, in my chairperson's report, that we did receive a letter suggesting that curative writing should be required in Kansas schools, and there's a copy of that letter in your folder. And then I wanted to mention that the entire board has been invited to lunch and to direct a breakout session as part of the Kansas Reading Association's statewide conference on Friday, October tenth, at Emporia State, and that invitation is in your folder, I don't know if you've noticed it yet. Uh, those board members who would be interested in participating would be asked to give a ten-to-twenty minute group overview of what's new in Kansas education from the board's perspective, and then answer questions from educators. And so we would need to get an idea of who might be interested in attending that. As a past member of the Kansas Reading Association, I would like to be one who would be involved. Uh, is there, or do, can you let me know now, or do you want to think about that? Kathy, would you? Okay, is there anyone else that might be interested in attending that meeting at Emporia? Okay, uh, Jim, you said, okay, well, i- if we even had a couple people, I think that would be great, so-
Yeah, Jen, I think it's-
If anybody else, after checking your schedule, can see that you have time, uh, let me know, or let, Peggy, do you, should they let you know, probably?
They can, I'd like to get back with the lady at Emporia State by week's end, because if there's not enough interest, they probably won't have that on their program.
Well, I think we'll be able to put-
Something-
Something together, but-
You know, even two, she said, would be, would be good, okay.
Uh-huh, okay, thank you very much. Now we're ready for our board attorney's report.
Madam Chair, I've submitted my monthly, uh, report, uh, if you have any questions regarding the activities, uh, I'd be happy to answer those, but I don't have anything in addition.
Questions for our board attorney? Okay, moving right along, uh, we've had our communications committee report, does the policy committee have anything to report?
No, not, not if it's not-
Okay, are there any other committees that I'm not thinking about that might have something to share with us? Okay. Well, then, we are ready for board member reports, and, uh, we'll start this time at Kathy's end of the table, with Kathy Bush.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, um, I attended the KLFA meeting recently, I was actually only able to go for part of the time, but, uh, you know, that is a great organization, they have a lot of, uh, different agencies and groups throughout the state that come together, and they're very willing and interested in partnering with us and providing support with whatever we need. Uh, KASB did, uh, ask them to go through the Rose capacities activity, and, uh, they participated in that, and had a good discussion, uh, as far as being able to get additional information about the Rose capacities, I think they appreciated that, so, uh, that's a good organization and a good, good support network, as far as getting information out about education, and, uh, throughout the, uh, throughout the state, so lots of different organizations involved in that. And, uh, I didn't get to go to the coordinating council meeting, as I was out of town, so I'm guessing maybe Sally's gonna report on that, so I'll be anxious to hear about that, so that's it for me.
Thank you, Jim McNeese?
Thank you, um, I attended the Kansas Multi-Tier System of Support MTSS Symposium that was in Wichita, and congratulations to the, uh, to the department for, uh, of learning services, it was a great, great program. Uh, I missed the MTSS wave as I retired a number of years ago, so it was really good to be part of, um, went to, uh, listen to Anita Archer, who is, you know, excellent on, uh, reading and, and, uh, questioning in classrooms, it was, was just terrific, and, uh, went to several sessions with Randy Sprig, uh, one on preventing and de-escalating , uh, problem behavior in, in, in the classroom, and, uh, he spoke quite highly of our ESI regulations, and, uh, the efforts that he's had in Wichita, working with, uh, teachers and teams, um, but, uh, he, he, the stuff was just wonderful, just great, you know, and, um, if you ever have an opportunity to go to one of these, I would certainly encourage you to do that. Got a lot out of it, and, uh, and it was good to see teams from schools there, it wasn't just individuals, it wasn't just like a principal, or, uh, ran into a lot of teams, you know, who were leadership teams, who would go back to their buildings with this information, and basically, I would say, most of the teams probably were getting refreshers and getting, um, uh, wasn't so much new information necessarily, but new takes on information, it was a continued, uh, effort, because most of these folks are really, you know, very, uh, aware and very involved, and, "Brad, how many were there?", "About twelve hundred people, eleven hundred people there?", you know, these sessions were like huge, you know, and the, and the present presenters were just great, so, uh, well done, great conference, um, uh, the Kansas Volunteer Commission Conference, State Conference, they'll have about two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred people in Wichita next week, I'm looking forward to that. Uh, regrettably, we found out that, um, Nicolette, our, uh, executive director, is, has retired, has resigned to take a position with Liberty Schools in, in, I believe, grant writing and, and grant fulfillment, uh, she's done a great job over the last two years, and I've been involved with the Kansas Volunteer Commission, and, uh, so we're immediately starting to look for an executive director there. Wish her well, thank her for her job, or, her performance and leadership, and look forward to continuing our work with, with them. Uh, NASB, I would tell you that, uh, that we have a new assistant director, executive director, uh, Frances Everly is, we went through a search similar to what we're doing here for ours, and, uh, Frances was already on the team, and, uh, moved up, um, some of you know Frances, I know, and, and I've been very impressed with him, so, I think we have a good leadership team, and NASB has, has moved forward, and we'll have our October meeting coming up here shortly. Yes?
The lady that came here?
No, 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 that's, she's the, uh, executive director, Chris, Frances is the assistant executive director.
Thank you.
Yes, you know, I look forward to, uh, working with him, he's, he's been with NASB for a while, so, uh, even though it's in-house, there were, like, a hundred-and-seventy-nine applicants for the position, um, I, and, I think, Ken, if I remember right, they told us about ninety of them were really qualified for it, something like that, you know, some high number. Yeah, and, uh, we had some great candidates, and, um, the members of the board interviewed, uh, the finalists, and, uh, made the decision to go with, uh, Frances, so, good luck to him, and, uh, again, the NASB conference that's coming up here shortly, uh, in, in October, for, for a number of us who are gonna be there, looking forward to going to that and, and, uh, sharing time with you there. Uh, I think that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Deana Horst.
Well, you've already heard reports, uh, from the Coalition Board, uh, we do have a meeting the twenty-third, um, in Salina, so if any of you would like to join us, we're going to be at Smokey Hill, um, Service Center, where it was held the last several times, and, um, it, uh, well, I believe it starts at nine, right?
Nine, yes.
And generally, we're over by, by noon, um, and the efficiency and professional, or prof- professional, yes, uh, anyway, the, um, commission that will be meeting tomorrow, um, we, our next meeting is tomorrow, or not our meeting, but the meeting that I will be observing is tomorrow and Friday, and you can, it is video streamed, so if you are interested in, in that, uh, connection, we can email that to you, or, um, I can let you copy it down today from, from my, uh, phone, probably, uh, Brad may actually have that available. And I did attend the Rose Standards, the KASV Rose Standards, um, which I thought, which was extremely well-done, and, um, I appreciate all the reports that came from that. Also attended District One and Two Teachers of the Year, uh, Programs. So that's, that's it?
Thank you. Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you. The only thing I think I've attended, which was excellent, was KASB's Rose Standards. And for someone like me that doesn't like those little group breakout sessions, it was amazing, the table I was at, there was only one person that enjoyed them. So, we, but they converted us. It was really good, and I really got a lot from it. But it was so funny, because you know me and my mouth. I initially said, "I don't like doing these type things," and everybody else harped up, "I don't either." But an excellent, I thought, day for us at KASB.
Well, I attended that meeting as well, and I thought the wonderful thing about it was to sit down with legislators and educators and Board Members and have discussions from those different perspectives and to be able to come up with some common understanding. So, I thought that was a great meeting. As Jim, I attended the MTSS Convention Conference and thought it was well-done as usual. And then, I always enjoy the Kansas Teacher of the Year recognitions. I attended the one in Wichita and Topeka. And just to see these teachers and hear about what they're doing and, and knowing that these represent our state is just a great experience. So, that was, those were the things that I attended this time. Sally Cobble.
I had a great time since the last time we met. I pretty well took a vacation. I did go to the council that Kathy referred to on the KSDE-K Board meeting. It was really interesting this time. And about what I'm to say, I hope you're, you're listening, because our interim commissioner came up with a great idea. And we're going to need to decide whether we like it too or not. But in the state of Kansas now, we have a seamless because of our last standards that we adopted. So, we are seamless from K through higher ed. And in doing that, we realized that maybe what we need or what we should do is that we have a common goal in the state of Kansas, K through, and that is to have children ready for the workplace. Now, we might want to say it differently, we might call it something else. But in that, it was kind of recommended by this council that when we finalize that, probably at the next meeting, and Kathy, that meeting is at 2:00 in the afternoon of the same date as we're coming back for our morning meeting. And anyway, but in this process, that as Andy and Brad go to the Legislature this next session, that maybe they can do it sometimes together, or at least they can say, you know, "This is what we want education in Kansas to look like, from K through higher ed." And these are the initiatives that we are working on together. And it goes back to when we moved that test down to sophomore. That gives us three years to work with students that we know are not where they should be, to where we can start some of those remedial programs in high school. And so, what Brad and Andy are in the process of doing is putting a team together. What would those classes look like? What, what are the things that we might need to do? And if I'm talking out of turn, you make sure you clarify, okay? Okay. And so, that we're hoping that by this process and by working together, that remedial education will happen before the child leaves high school. And because we already know that remedial work, the four-year colleges cannot receive any money for remedial work. And all of that has to be done in the community college level. And so, what would that look like? And we also think that, you know, that that might be doing what we're responsible for, making sure that our high school graduates are what the workforce thinks they are. And with the workforce being in on what those standards and helping write what those standards were in math and, and language arts, then we're actually producing maybe the workforce that we have been asked to do. And so, in that philosophy and in that thinking of this council, I would probably recommend, since Kathy wasn't there, I would like to bring to you that when we meet with the Education Committee of the Senate and the House, that that might be an opportune time for us to also bring the K Board directors and meet at the same time, so that they can see that we are united in providing a seamless. Also, one of our goals on the Communication Committee is that we would meet with K Board once a year. And I really think if we would design that time together like Jim has vision of, then we will all have time to visit and communicate and maybe establish as a unit some things that we all know that is going on in the state of Kansas as an educational thing. But also, you know, maybe there's some common things we all want to work on and, and bring us all together on this issue. So, unless you send us blasting emails that you do not want to include K Board or in this meeting, or Jim, in working with Senator Abrams, decides that that's too big a group, we'll probably can, we'll probably go ahead and, and do that at that time. Or K Board might not want to join us either. So, you know, but until you give comments to Peggy, don't send them to Jim or I, send them to Peggy, not wanting to do that, then that's probably how we'll help do some of this seamless education for our students in Kansas. That is really, besides KTOE, the only thing that I can say that I went to, that I, I need to, to report on. I am going to have the opportunity again to serve on that Interstate Migrant Council that we used to do, and then we stopped. And Brad with Doug has decided that maybe that was more advantageous for us to be a part of than what we thought. And so, Brad appointed, no, I guess you guys had me back on there. And John Dahl is from the Legislature. And we will be going together, well, he's going to take the train and I'm going to drive to Santa Fe. But we will be, and I'll have that report the next time. Along with, we have, I received an invitation from the Council of State Governance. And they have only invited seven states to participate and on policies around standards. And Diane Dirks from the, she a House Member or Senator? She's a House, House. Yeah, she, she is going to attend. And so, we will be down there together in another week. So, that's all I have.
Is that sponsored by CCSSO, or who's?
No, that's CSGs. Council of State Governance.
Okay, thanks.
And, so...
Jana Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did attend a few meetings this month. I'll just bring the highlights of the ones that I thought were kind of exciting. KCK has started a new program called Read Today and Lead Tomorrow. It's all about reading, making sure kids are reading. But the one big thing I really thought that I, I left with, that I mean, other than, the program's really exciting, but they said everyone should ask, and this is why I want to say it to you. Everyone should ask a child every time you visit with a child, your child, your grandchildren, or somebody else, "What book are you reading?" You know? And I, and I do that now with my grandchildren, or when I see kids, you know, and it's kind of neat. You know, that starts a conversation with what book they're reading. So, I thought that was kind of neat, you know. So, it's a neat program that's going on there, too, the whole entire program. But I thought that was really neat. I did attend the Kansas Teacher of the Year Program this year, which I think I've made almost all of them, if not all of them, since I've been on the Board. But this year was unique. It was a little bit different than most years. The ones I attended in Topeka and Kansas City, and Elrod Park, believe it or not, the elementary and secondary teachers were from the same district. No, Paola. It was Paola, wasn't it? And Bonner Springs. And that's, I asked Sherry Bouvats, I thought, "I didn't remember this ever happening before." But Sherry said that it had happened one, it's happened three times in the history of the state since we've started the program, once in the 90s and twice this year. So, I thought that was kind of, that's kind of unique and special, you know. I did attend the Rose Standards meeting. That was, I agree, I echo what you've all said, because I really was impressed with that. And I also attended Confidence and Kansas Public Ed Meeting. I think, I think I've told you before, we will not be having the Challenge Banquets this year. But we will have them, hopefully, starting again next year. And the Governor's Scholars will be the first Sunday in May, which it normally is, and there will not be a dinner served, it'll just be a presentation. So, that's it. Thank you.
John Bacon.
I was invited to attend a Culture Club meeting in Alatha. And one of the things that I thought that was interesting that they brought up was the disparity in the level of fluency for deaf interpreters across the state. And it's hard for parents and sometimes administrators to know how good they are. And so, they were wondering if maybe we could, I don't know if we want to be involved in this at all, or who should be, but how we could rate deaf interpreters, one to five, what their competency is, as far as maybe for technical language versus just reading a storybook type of thing. So, to make sure that kids that aren't being serviced by one of the schools, you know, like School for the Deaf, are getting the full content of the, of the information, you know, the text. So, I don't know if that's something that we would want to get involved in at some point, but that was just brought up in the meeting, I thought was of interest. We all saw the interpreter at Nelson Mandela's memorial service, it was just flinging, you know, arms. I didn't know, looked good to me, but... But anyway, you know, I don't know if that's actually happening, somebody gets a paycheck for being an interpreter for a child.
I'm just, I'm wondering if there's a professional organization that does that kind of thing? Or are they licensed? Are interpreters licensed?
I don't know, I don't think so.
I guess we need to get more background information.
I don't know, but they said there is a problem with students getting all the information they need to succeed. So, that's really all I had.
Jana, just FYI, that time I had to get interpreter for the gal from, that came to observe here. When I called around to several agencies, the one I finally found, I think, was out of someplace in Missouri. They are ranked by levels. Level five was the highest.
Or do we have that here?
Yeah, I don't know about Kansas, but I know in Missouri, because she asked me, you know, what the person would be doing and suggested like a level four, which was what we had here, but, and Kansas, I mean, it's a good question.
Well, wouldn't that be information we could get through the School for the Deaf? At least as a starting point? Yeah, they ought to know.
It may not be something that's requested, like Peggy did, or districts know to request, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, make sure that they're competent, so...
It's an important issue.
Ken Wellard.
I have, all two have attended the K-12 Commission meetings. The last one, well, I think, I think the meetings thus far have been more for the edification of the Commission members than anything else. They've, they've been, last time there were testimony from, I believe, 12 superintendents. And they were chosen based upon the size of their district and whether or not they were above or below the median for efficiency. And they were good, very good presentations and pretty varied. And they've talked about the, the efforts that they have already implemented to try to find efficiencies. So, I think that's been helpful for the Commission to hear. It's going to get more interesting now, because there's going to be actual interaction between the Commission members about how to proceed. They have used pretty much, I think you have an agenda in the packet of stuff here, but they've used, using the Task Force recommendations from a couple of years ago as kind of the basis for their, their considerations. And to determine whether or not sufficient legislative action has already taken place on them, or if more is needed, and then they will make recommendations of legislation that be carried by someone in the House, someone in the Senate, identical bills. So, that's what's taking place this, this month. I also was assigned by this Board to serve on the Board of the Kansas Foundation for Excellence, which, whose responsibility is the Kansas Teacher of the Year. And last year, we always have a presentation at that meeting from the current Teacher of the Year. And last year, following that presentation, we had a discussion about the extraordinary demands that are on the Teacher of the Year for their travel and speaking engagements that in some cases has caused problems with, has a propensity or the possibility of causing family issue, family problems, and undue stress on them and undue travel. So, in the past year, they've taken some, they've made some modifications to the program based on that. So, now, no, apparently, some colleges would be requesting the teacher to come numerous times throughout the year to present, to be a part of things. And, and these, these teachers of the year have just tried to meet every request that comes to them. So, there's been some efforts made to limit them somewhat to provide for more, to give more consideration for family issues and events and that sort of thing, so they're not just totally booked from the time they start till they end. But we had heard a presentation from Jeff Baxter, the current, current Teacher of the Year. And I had a little discussion with him afterwards, because he had mentioned that that he teaches classics in his work. And, you know, one of the, the complaints that we've heard about, concern about the Common Core is that classics are ignored now. And again, there's so much misinformation out there about what is demanded or called for in the Common Core, when actually the problems that people are concerned about are actually teacher decisions about how they, how they teach. So, he made it very clear that he, you know, he still teaches the classics. And our previous Teacher of the Year last year, very clearly, she still teaches the classics. So, getting the truth out is always helpful, but it's difficult sometimes. But there was also discussion about organizations like our, like this one and other education organizations using the Teachers of the Year as, as a resource for making decisions about how to improve education, valuing them as a resource more than is currently done, because they're not used all that much. So, I think there will be something more coming out in that regard. Recommendations from them about how to be best used, them and the team, so... And I believe that's it for today.
Thank you. Steve Roberts.
Thank you. I was privileged to go to the MTSS Conference in Wichita for a couple of days. I'm sorry I didn't see my fellow Board Members down there. I'm sorry I didn't see my fellow Board members down there. But I hung out with the math people, for the most part. And so I'm going to give you a few minutes to, to think about a math problem that was prominent in one of the presentations from some professors from North Carolina. Valerie Faulkner and Chris Kane from NC State and Mars Hill presented on being more creative and responsive to our kids' needs in math class, and they had wonderful presentations. And they keyed on fractions, so I'd like you to just think about making a little word story for this problem, if you would please. You can just write this down on a scrap piece of paper, if you like. One and three quarters divided by one half. And just tell a little story to illustrate this for, for your kids. That would be one and three quarters divided by one half. I'll give you a minute to think about that. I've also been trying to answer the question, what is it about pedagogy that's essential that we need to hang on to for especially our early primary, also later primary, special ed, and intermediate? I'm thinking that there, there may actually be a need to break out intermediate teachers from primary and secondary, the more I think about it. I don't know. But I know there has to be a distinction somewhere between primary and secondary. And I'm trying to answer that question. I mentioned earlier this morning that I had a meeting last week with Tanya Marigan, Dr. Marigan is Executive Director, I think is her title, for Curriculum and Instruction in Blue Valley, and she called a meeting with two elementary principals and two middle school principals. And I'm trying to answer this question, and what I keep getting is that we need to ensure good outcomes. That's, that's why we have pedagogy. But I keep asking, what are these essential elements? And we're having a very difficult time defining what those are. You know, I come from an engineering background where we have a specific body of knowledge. There are certain things you have to learn to be an engineer. And I'm sure there are certain things you have to know to be a teacher beyond basic literacy, but I think we have a difficult time answering that question. So I keep hearing that the answer is, well, we need to ensure good outcomes. And, you know, who's going to argue with that? I, I wholeheartedly agree, we need to ensure good outcomes. But I think we're overemphasizing this business of ensuring, I really do. I mean, when you get right down to it, can you, can we really ensure that every child, you know, learns to hit a curveball, or learns to do calculus, or learns to appreciate Shakespeare? I don't know. I think we overuse the word ensure. So I'm, I'm working for that. There's a meeting scheduled with Shawnee Mission. I have a similar meeting, as I had last week, a similar meeting scheduled with Shawnee Mission instructors next week. And I'd like to ask a fellow Board member to accompany me to a meeting that I'm in the process of setting up in Paola. That might be closer to one of my fellow Board members, so I would like someone to attend that meeting with me, if someone has such an inclination, to help answer this question, what is it about the elements of pedagogy that we need to ensure for our teacher preparation? So back to the math problem. Does someone want to proffer a story to describe one and three quarters divided by one half? Or should I just tell you the rest of the story? Right. That's what most teachers said, is seven eighths. And so there were perhaps, I did three of these seminars at MTSS, and more than 90% of the teachers suggested that you have something like one and three quarters cups of cake batter, and you put it into two pans, how much do you have in each pan? And this is a, a very common mistake, that one and three quarters divided by one half is seven eighths, and I would say 90% of them answered that, or set it up that way. When I gave the problem to my business partner, Cold, I said, could you come up with a problem? One and three quarters divided by one half? Let's see, he said, okay, Johnny eats one and three quarter Big Macs in the time it takes Suzie to eat a half of one. How many can he eat in the time it takes her to eat a whole Big Mac? The answer's three and a half. Because when you take one and three quarters and divide it by one half, you get three and a half. And most of our math teachers don't know that. Folks, we have problems. We have serious problems. This idea that pedagogy comes first, it doesn't necessarily come first, at least in technical subjects. So there's, there's a crisis out there, and when Blue Valley goes to hire a secondary teacher to teach physics or chemistry, they, by golly, get somebody who knows chemistry or physics. Our hard scrabble schools have hard, they have a hard time getting somebody with a general chemistry background, with a general science background. Changes are warranted. And so the things that I've heard today about licensure and the need to ensure excellence in the classroom, I can't argue with anything I've heard here today. I just know that we have to take a fresh look from time to time, the things we're doing. It seems like there was something else that I wanted to report on, but it escapes me at this time, so that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
I'm a little puzzled. We heard a presentation today, there were 10 standards of, for teacher knowledge, what they need to know and be able to do. Those are pedagogy, understanding children and how they learn, understanding learning styles. There are, you know, if you look at that, there are many areas that teachers have to have a background in to be effective in the classroom. So I'm thinking, and Janet, you had mentioned to me a request for a future agenda item. Would you like to mention that now?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to request, well, let me say this, after Jim made his comments, I think Jim is the one that made me think of this, about people don't understand pedagogy, exactly what it is and how much it covers. And I think this is true. I think John Q. Citizen doesn't understand that. They think if you're a math teacher, you just need to know math and then get up and teach kids, anybody can do this, you know? Well, I don't think that's true, and certainly having two children who are educators, they don't think that's true, you know? But anyway, I, I would like to have a presentation at a Board meeting, not on the Friday note, at a Board meeting on pedagogy. Let's go into it in detail of exactly what all it covers, because I think it's so important. I mean, and my kids have both told me that their best parts of their in-service after they've become a teacher has been more pedagogy, you know, how to handle their class and things like this. So I would like to request that as a future agenda item. Thank you.
Sally Cobble.
I'd like to clarify.
Yes.
I'd like to clarify your request, since we'll be talking about it. Your request is to maybe have somebody, and I would call it professional development for the Board, on pedagogy, but would you mind if, in that request, if we would bring somebody in? Because what I'm hearing Steve say is he doesn't struggle with the pedagogy for elementary at all.
Well, I can respond to that. Actually, I would say that it's more difficult for me to teach the little ones because I haven't had the training in how the little ones process everything. And the more recent training I've had as an engineer is secondary and post-secondary, so I tend to just naturally relate to the upper levels more naturally.
Okay, I, I think we, what I'm hearing is we might need to understand and, and split out the importance when we find somebody, to find somebody that can explain in education on, on all levels, not, and to help with this.
That's exactly what I'm requesting. That's what I want, that's what I want to hear, because, and quite frankly, I hate to admit this, but I'll just be real straight with you, when I first got on this Board, I did not know what pedagogy meant. You know, when I got the definition, I certainly understood what it meant. And now that I go talk to people, pedagogy is a normal word for me, and I will use it, and they look at me and I have to explain what pedagogy is, you know? And I think John Q. Citizen doesn't understand this, and we do have some people out there, and I think we need to explain it to the public better, you know? Hopefully, this will be a beginning of us communicating this to the public, of what pedagogy is and the value of pedagogy. Because like I say, my two kids are extremely, and my son was a band director, and he taught elementary through high school, you know? And my daughter, of course, teaches middle school, so they both are extremely, feel the extreme importance of pedagogy. But I'd just simply like to have a presentation for the Board, not only for us, but for the public and for everyone. Thank you.
Are there other requests for, for future agenda items? Deana Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When we, one of the things that has, or organizations that have come up at the Efficiency and Performance Commission meetings has been service centers. And I'm not sure what every service center does, and where they're located, who they serve, et cetera. So I'm thinking that it might be a good idea for us to find out a little more about what service centers are doing for our, our schools, our school districts, what services they are providing, and whether they have a closed group, or whether they open it up to the entire state, and if they do, how they provide that service, whether it's on, by video, or how, how that takes place. So I would, I would just recommend that we find out a little more about what our service centers are doing.
And I, Brad May, no, I don't know if that information is readily available, or if we would need to survey them, or how we would gather that information.
Yeah, there are seven service centers, and those service centers have the Kansas Association of Service Centers, so, and they have, one of the service center directors serves as the chair of that. But they are, they are all different. You can look in our educational directory, and you can find out who the seven are, what school districts are members, because not all districts are a member of a service center. So anyway, there's information that you can go out and find, or?
Maybe you could include that in a Friday letter to start with, if that's not too cumbersome.
I can get you a bunch of stuff about our service centers in a, in a Friday update, and how they're organized, what's the difference between a service center and a co-op, and then if you wanted it as an agenda item, then we could work on that, too.
I, I knew that there were, and there's different levels of membership within at least some of the, the service centers. So I think that also is something that I'm not sure how it's listed in, in our information. It may be just the group of, of those who actually make the decisions. And if that's the case, that eliminates several others they have relationships with. But at any rate, I just think it would be a good idea for us to know some of the things that, that they're doing. And in fact, that is one of the ways that districts can be more efficient in, in serving their, their students, serving their, their education, their educators, the teachers that they, they have, their staff, so to speak. So I think it behooves us to know that particular information, so we can point that out to our constituency when someone says they're, someone's wasting money and so on. We can perhaps help divert some of that criticism. So, thank you.
Kathy Bush.
Thank you. And this could probably be easily in a Friday letter, but now that the school year has begun, a good solid month behind us, I'd be interested to know how many people have taken advantage of the new STEM licensure, and just, you know, who's got a job in the area of those different, and there's what, six or seven or so different areas? So just, I'd be curious to know that. And I know we'll get that when we get the licensure report, but it'd be interesting to know. I don't know if that's pretty easily available. If it's not, I can certainly wait, but I'd be interested to know that. Thank you.
I think it would be interesting also to know how many districts have hired individuals in the, in the tech areas as well, under the new licensure opportunities they've, they've been given.
Other requests? Ken Willard.
I wanted to address both Janet's request and Deana's. On the Deana's request regarding the service centers, I would prefer an actual agenda item, and maybe even representatives from the service centers to be part of that presentation, because I would like to know some things like how contracts are let to these service centers, what their areas of expertise are, because I've heard some rumblings about some service centers being chosen routinely over others, and some not having an opportunity to bid on a project or whatever. I think we need to get deeper into that than just a Friday letter. Also, on the pedagogy discussion, when we have that presentation, I would like to know, have a better understanding of the proper balance between pedagogy and content knowledge, because I've had personal experience with teachers that have just come out of the schools of education, with all the pedagogy training that qualified them to be a teacher, who were so weak on content knowledge that it was embarrassing to me. And, and I found myself in a position of having to help with making corrections to things that were being told to kids. And this had to do with math, and history, and reading, and, and that teacher, the one particular teacher that I'm thinking that that reference is no longer teaching, and for good cause. But when I see letters come home from, with my grandkids from school, with improper grammar, and, and just things that don't speak well for somebody who's highly educated and should be teaching our kids, I think there's some, there's, there's a, should be a better balance of content knowledge and proficiency in pedagogy, and not so much reliance on pedagogy. That's my bias at this point, my thinking on it. I'd like to get a better understanding of that, and understand why those kinds of things happen.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you. I remembered the, the thing I wanted to mention. I have a 2:00 meeting, again, to answer the question, what are these elements of pedagogy? And it's with Keystone, one of our service centers, and that's at 2:00 today. So if someone would like to go with me to that, I'd, I'd be happy to invite anyone to attend this meeting with me. I do have to, to mention this, since we're on the service centers business, I don't want to say which of the seven service centers this teacher's from. They're big on CGI. I don't know if you're familiar with CGI. To me, it's a computer graphical interface, but it means something else in the world of education, CGI. And they tend to say things like, two plus four is the same as six. They say the same as. And if you heard the professors from North Carolina teaching at, at the MTSS Conference, they say, no, this is not the right way to approach things. You have to worry about units and things like that. So there's a discussion about how effective CGI is. But I have to share this with you, and I wish I had the card in front of me. There was a booth at the MTSS Conference where one of our teachers... There was a booth at the MTSS conference where one of our teachers from Kansas had a nice little five by eight glossy card printed up with her picture on it, and how they're doing so many great things to teach our children, all about the language of math. And the word decimals was spelled with two Es. I'm not making this up. Decimals. E L S. It was embarrassing. I mean, it was just embarrassing. So yes, there's, there's plenty of work to do. Thank you.
Were there other requests? I would like to request an update on our accreditation model and how we're moving forward with that, because that affects everything that we're doing, assessment and everything else. So if there are no others, then we're ready to act on board travel. Should I have the motion and then people tell things they want to add, or shall we ask for any additions first? Because I wanted to, assuming that we're doing that October 10th Reading Association thing, add that to mine. And October 21st, the annual conference in Wichita for travel and salary. Just one day, the 21st. Now, are there others that had additions? Sally Cobble.
Madam Chairman, I don't know what I did with that piece of paper that you wanted me to attend on the 26th, and it's in Topeka. Do you know which, what I'm talking about?
Well...
I need to add it to the agenda, I mean, to my...
I gave you the page.
I don't know.
Well, while she's looking, let's go ahead. Carolyn Campbell.
I would like to add the Common Sense about the Common Core on October the 30th, salary and mileage.
Anyone else? Deana Horst?
I'd like to add the Common Sense and Common Core as well. I had signed up for that previously, so we'll plan on doing it again.
Janet Waugh? It was the 30th, I think, 30th of October.
Of October? Well, I, I want to try to attend that. I don't have anything scheduled right now. I've got it, in fact, I have it on my calendar. Just salary and mileage.
And Sally, did you find?
I found it.
I was not able to attend this function as, as Vice Chair. I had asked Sally if she would attend, so...
It's through the Kansas Children's Service League, and it's their Declaration of Bullying Prevention Month. It's on Friday, September 26th. My mileage will be from Manhattan to Topeka. And then I go home. And I won't need any per diem, I'll stay with my daughter.
Any other additions? Then do I hear a motion to approve board travel? Moved by Ken Willard, seconded by Jim McNeese. All in favor, raise your right hand. 10-0. Thank you. Now we, Sally, we need a motion for executive session.
I would like to entertain a... I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed. This session will last no longer than 30 minutes, and no action will be taken during this session. For those to be invited into the session would be Dr. Christman, Von Maurer, and Mark Ferguson.
So we have a... A motion for an executive session of 30 minutes. Can we...
We need to say when it begins. At five till?
Yeah. Beginning at five till 12:00 and concluding at 12:25. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Carolyn Campbell. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. 10-0. We will take a short break while we get ready for that executive session.